Are we ready?
Yeah.
So you should get ready for the meeting.
I have this going, it's going now.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay Lori, you're on.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting for Public Utilities. Mr. Crisselli.
Here.
Mr. Bowles.
Here.
And Mr. Greenwood here. So, we have Tom Dogg here tonight, so he can go over with us. Some of his gas rates and kind of explain a little bit more, because we're creeping up on on gas rates and we want to get something locked in before it's too late. And then we just have to decide if we want to lock in for one, two, three, or four years. So, can you go over that with us, Tom, so everybody can kind of?
Yeah, sure, so I have a handout here to pass those down. So, the program has a February 1st start. So, the, um, so the rule is to send out the notices to residents 45 days in advance, so that would back us up to around mid-December then. So, we need to maybe lock something in by next week. So that's why we have the meeting here tonight, is to authorize the administration to to renew the program and go forward. So, on the page in front of you has the rates. So the first column is the month. Natural gas is priced, different price each month, and it's also weighted. The third column is the average rate, which is the average usage. You can see, very little use in the summer and a lot more in the winter. So it's a weighted average based on the number of months that you pick. I've highlighted yellow as being high, what I consider a high month, $4 or more. And then the green is the really cheap months of $3 or less. So it's very attractive to, you know, three, four years out, that third and fourth year. So if we average it together, we can get a better rate. So, the one-year rate right now is $4.72, and a $4.45 for a two-year, $4.24. Now, we had a limit order, we were a little optimistic at $2.99, so that didn't trigger. But, uh, we did have that, in case it did, so that could have happened. So that three-year rate is now $4.27. We're really kind of targeting something like $3.99 or less.
I was thinking.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this is when you have your target price up top?
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, four years, $4.11. Now, we can also implement a senior discount, so those 65 and older get an extra 10 cents off. So.
That's a good thing.
There are four, you know.
That's for me.
Regular ones are $4.09, then they could get $3.99.
Yeah.
Uh, it just helps, uh, helps there. So, um, that, these are some of our options. Now, there's, there's one more option, and that's to delay the fixed rate, so that's the last column. So if we start a four-year fixed rate, in February it's $4.11, but if we delay a month, it's only $4.08, and then so forth, all the way down. You'd have to delay it almost a full year to get under $3.99, but you can see how close it is. One day or two days, uh, it could happen to drop.
The cost of this, I'm sure there's many different factors that go into this, correct?
Yes, yes.
And some of them are probably a lot of the natural gas wells and the things that are actually producing?
Yeah, so that's the nine, that's reflected in the New York Mercantile Exchange number right here. So this is a publicly traded number.
Okay.
So that's really the starting point.
Where are we at now with our aggregate?
Uh, the rate's $2.97.
That's what we're paying right now.
Yeah.
So we're gonna jump up quite a bit? About 33%, 35%?
Yeah.
Looking like.
Yeah, and, you know, to put it in perspective, if you're with Dominion right now, Dominion's rate is 6.5.
Yeah, 6.5.
No, this $2.97, what's that good for?
That's the, uh.
This February?
February bill cycle.
Okay.
So this is March bill cycle going forward. So we're really through winter, we're, there's only one winter month left. So this will really, you know, hit people next year, not in the future. Because the usage, as you can see, goes down. We've only got April there, we've only a month over 10 MCF on average. So we really just got one winter month before we go.
Uh, not through, is it through March or, was it through March or through February? I'm sorry.
It goes through, uh, January, but February bill cycle. Let's say, so if you're billing on February 15th, that would be your last one, it's a $2.97.
Yeah, it would be for January.
Yeah, January start, February end, is that billing cycle is the last one.
At the $2.97.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that gets you through, you know, you're in the February usage.
Yeah.
So that pretty much gets you through winter, just one more month to go. March is the last one. So, you know, we did well to, to have the $2.97, but this is.
Different times.
Uh, now, yeah, but historically, even $4 was low, we've gone through periods of, you know, six, seven, eight, and higher, but, uh, in the past eight years or so.
Speculating four years out seems difficult. I mean, it, it could be back at the $2.99 in four years, we really don't know, you know what I mean?
But that's what we would be striking at, some of these months, we, we would be taking advantage of that.
We'd be under, under the, we'd be under $3.
So you'd be, you were actually buying these months under $3, the green months.
I see what you mean, because it's all.
Okay.
Yeah, you're actually taking advantage of, so the opportunity doesn't leave. That's why I'm leaning more towards a longer term.
Yes.
Than we normally do.
Yeah.
To, it seems as though, that when you're close, the price is high, which is, which is unusual. Usually in the gas market, the farther out you go, the higher the rate, just pure inflation and other factors. It just hasn't, doesn't seem to be that way, it's the closer months, and this happened last year as well. Closer months were the expensive ones.
And like, Tom explained it, like, if we get the $4.11, we can't go back, we can't, like, in two years, say, it's $2.97 again, so.
That's what I mean, that's why I'm saying, I'm saying speculate. Because if the price drops, we're committing to this price, so I guess our speculation has to.
If it does go down, the people have an opportunity to opt out and go somewhere else.
Yeah, certainly, so that's the.
I don't understand what I'm saying.
They don't have to stick with this.
Right.
They can shop around.
So there's no penalty for?
No penalty to leave.
So they have the option of getting out if they can find a cheaper.
No, that's true. And if not, like, right now, if people, I, I actually joined the aggregate recently, because my gas went up to like six. It was, so, so I went into this recently because of that. So it does give people an option to be able to stay into something lower in case we, because I do remember years ago, when I first moved to Strether's, it was like 11, 10 or 11.
Oh, yeah.
Really?
2008, 2012.
Yeah, I didn't care, you must have been making good money there.
Because that's like, like, I recall and try to get later.
I was only like 22, so.
Um, I mean, I guess, it's only like a, I mean, it's only like a dollar more, you know?
Right, you know? Well, I mean, obviously you're not locked in at this, they have the option to opt out of it and find cheaper service, so.
Yeah.
Truly, there, what, what is, I guess when you really look at it from that standpoint, what is the downfall of just locking yourself in, in case it goes up? You're insulated if it goes up, but if it, you can still opt out if it goes down, so.
Right, and instead of having six point, whatever it is now, when some of them are here at four.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding that right.
What, what, what do you feel the market's gonna do in three or, three or four years? Do you think it's gonna go up even more?
What?
Yeah, but, uh, from, uh, so you look at January 2024, it is $3.78. That's, you know, that's pretty typical rate. But, you know, January 2024, $3.60, that's pretty cheap, I mean, that's, I think that's a bargain.
But do you think that these numbers are gonna stick though, Tom? Is what, I think what we're trying to get at is.
Yeah, I think we're gonna see higher numbers in these, these outer meters, as we, as we get closer.
I mean, inflation alone, if you're just following inflationary times, I mean, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Who knows if we're gonna be producing our own gas anyway?
Well, that was gonna be my next thing. Here's what I was thinking, but after the fact that they can just opt out, you're with this administration for three more years.
Right.
So you, they're obviously not friendly to the gas market, right? So in that three years, we can anticipate that it's probably gonna continue to go up.
Yeah, that's probably so.
After that, you really don't know who's coming in, if this administration is gonna win again, or if they're gonna lose, or what's gonna go on beyond that.
And we'd only have one more year that we're committed to that.
Correct, and my, my thought was though, they could always opt out at that point, so I don't, I just don't see a drawback to going to four years.
I don't know.
Yeah.
There's so many independent companies now, if they feel like they're gonna get a better rate, they can go to, it's not like.
They can, they've always had that option.
You know, this is a monopoly where we, there's one or two companies, there's, there's a ton now, so.
They've always had that option, ever since we started this group.
Right.
So there's one more thing, um, transportation rates are going up, so that's another reason. If we lock in a rate, we'd be subject to any transportation rate increases, I don't.
Good evening.
So, so that, I think, would be a good thing.
So in other words, that doesn't lock in, that if they increase on their rates for transportation?
The supplier side, so the costs go from the wellhead to the Dominion system. That cost is locked in as well.
Oh, it is locked in as well?
Yeah, we would be locking that in with, with the $4.11 or $2.99 or whatever it is. And so if those costs go up, we'd be, um, you know.
We'd be saying?
We'd be say, we'd be all sad, and we wouldn't worry about pipeline shutdowns and, and things like that. So that'd be, that's another reason to go for a longer term.
Okay.
When do you need to lock this in?
So we'd like to do it next week.
Next week?
Yeah. So, what we have, we have an agreement with Buckeye Energy to go for the next term. And then we have, uh, price requests that would limit it at, just, I had to pick a number for tonight's meeting, so I picked 4.25, there or lower. So, but I'm sure it's a $3.99.
So you think we could get $3.99?
If the market moves as much as it did today or yesterday, um, you know, it's possible. You know, you just have to have that limit orders set up and submitted before, before doing anything. But it's, it's certainly possible. It's just that, again, the letters, this, or PUCO rule, there's PUCO rule, we need to get those out by the middle of the month.
And then who signs that, the mayor signs all that?
Yes. What do we do for electric?
You gave me.
Did I give you two of those sheets?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the bottom one there has the electric. So we'll be switching to Dianji this, uh, this spring, so that's, it's in March, I believe. So everybody with Energy Harbor switches to Dianji in April, so that's right here, yeah. So it goes to 4.44, I've talked to a lot of residents, they're absolutely thrilled that, in this rising energy market, the price is dropping. So that goes to March 2025, so we did that for three years, right?
Okay. So, okay. So all the, all the people that automatically go into that, right, that's in the aggregate program right now?
Yeah, so Energy Harbor will give their list to Dianji seamlessly.
So we'll go from $5.11 to $4.44?
Yeah.
That's good.
Yeah.
Can't complain about that, huh?
If somebody wants to get into that for the electric, do they call that 1-866?
Yeah, that, that number right there, yeah, so, so if you call today, it'll be Energy Harbor, if you call after April, it'll be Dianji.
Okay.
Can we get copies now?
Sure, Megan, can you make this call?
That's the number to call?
Yes, that's for electric, and then if, yes, if they want to get into the aggregate, it's that 1-867-1-8, is that the number that they call?
Yeah, that's it.
On here?
That's it.
Because I know, you know, people have been calling even, asking Michelle.
I get like two calls, just from Strether's.
I think that's what she's saying.
I get like offs, oh.
You want a copy of this one too?
No, I think we have.
Okay. I'll get, I'll get a copy of this one.
I like the copy, though.
In case of presence.
So those are the decent legislation?
Right, right, so, um, this one, Buckeye Energy, the agreement's here, and, uh, inflation, and then this is the price request.
Thank you.
For, uh, for consolation.
Everyone finding an agreement to go with the four years?
Aye, I'm good with that, I am.
Yeah.
The only thing that was empty to me was up to the last year, whether you go three or four, but you could always opt out.
So then, now seniors, John, how do they, how do you know, like, how do they get?
So you would call, you'd call in, same number, the 1-800 number, uh, call in and ask for.
How old do you have to be?
65.
65. You gotta put.
I can't wait till I'm 65.
You just gotta put your gas bill in Ronnie's name.
Gotta look forward to something.
Anything else, Mr. Seag?
No, I don't think, I think we should just move on it and go with it, and same with the senior citizen discount, because we do have a lot of senior citizens.
Sure.
And everybody loves a discount.
Yeah.
All right, Tom, so I think we're all, all good on that, we just need to get Mayor to sign that for you and get you to go.
All you need is a word from us, we don't actually.
Well, we're gonna have to bring out that legislation.
It's in front of the.
Those are the two pieces of legislation, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's all that could pass.
So how did that work?
I gave it to Lori, which now you guys are talking about, the two pieces of legislation I have that says PU on Alcop?
Yeah.
I gave, I did give it to PU, I had it as well. Those are the two pieces, if you want to look at them.
Were you in a legislation there prior, or was that to just prevent a shot for us? We just needed a verbal permit from council?
Yeah, verbal consent.
Pass, right, we have to, we have to.
It'll pass on the eighth.
The legislation.
I was thinking.
Yeah.
Yeah. Guy can dream, right?
So you guys, are you guys gonna talk about this too now?
If we're good with it, then we're good with it. I'm, I'll, I'll read the.
You'll need to send it to finance legislation and bring it out.
So you guys will vote on it?
Yeah, to bring it out.
Bring it out.
Right now, we're gonna put it on?
You, you're.
Just your committee.
Right, okay.
Motion to bring it out.
Second. Do you have to read the legislation or?
No, you're gonna read it.
Okay.
Okay, so we have two pieces of legislation that we're gonna bring out. Is there anything else for Public Utilities? To adjourn, motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
To adjourn.
Thanks, Tom.
Well, thank you very much, you've heard time, I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom, Jeff.
Have a nice holiday.
You too.
We'll be back in touch after.
As soon as it's passed, I'll make sure we send you a copy.
Right.
And then when, I think that agreement will have the mayor sign.
Yeah. Yeah, once we get that, we can set up to strike the price.
Okay.
Thanks, Tom.
All right.
Have a good night.
All right.
You have a safe trip, bye.
Take care.
Bye, have a Merry Christmas.
Did you get your adjourn?
Yes. Yep.
All this financing legislation meeting order, Mr. Burnside here, Mr. Crisselli here, Mr. Bigley's present. Got four pieces tonight, um, we'll get right to it. An ordinance amending the city's codified ordinances to create Chapter 1501 for Ohio Fire Code and declaring an emergency. Anybody wants to talk about it, motion to bring it up. This is, Tim, I assume this came, it says a moita, so I'm assuming it came through Kathy. 1501 of the city's fire code.
John's over there.
John, you see John's going forward tomorrow, please add a call?
That would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The fire marshal wants to adopt the state fire codes consisting of rules related to all aspects of fire safety.
Mike's been also, I didn't talk to Mike. He's been in and out.
Sign that? Hello? You want me to put you on speaker? Anyway. It's Mayor.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Kat.
Hi, I'm sorry to come here tonight, but I'm watching on the Zoom. That is just like a house evening thing, I guess John was looking over some things, um, in the ORC, and that was brought to our attention, he just needs to adopt it, so it's nothing different, it's nothing out of the ordinary, they just wanted to adopt the, the same code that the state has, so nothing extreme.
Okay.
So he actually brought that to our, to my attention.
It doesn't change much for the way we do business down here?
Yeah, no, it don't change anything, it's just adopting the same thing that the state has. So basically reiterating what they have.
Like, we have, we have adopted the building code from the state, we never adopted the fire code from the state, and.
Oh, John there?
Yeah, I, I would just want to.
Turn the door right there.
Oh, sorry, okay, I'll get off.
Okay, I'll talk to her.
And this is going to give the fire department more ability, um, to go in and deal with properties that may present a fire risk. So, I mean, we're not, I think, I was actually surprised to find out that we never adopted the fire code, um, because from what, from what I could tell, just about every other city has adopted the fire code, so, um, just a formality. It won't affect you guys in any way, it's just more of the administration for the fire department.
Okay, okay, so nothing, it's not, uh, does it have anything to do with checking each commercial property, granting access? Any of this that we discussed prior?
No.
Okay. Okay, need a motion to bring it up, thanks, John, Tim.
Motion to bring it up. Second.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to the second one. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of Strether's to enter into a contract with Constellation New Energy Gas Division LLC as a natural gas supplier for the residential and small commercial members of the city of Strether's natural gas aggregate program without necessity of public bids, and declaring an emergency.
Mostly you bring that?
Yes. Second?
Second.
Hang on one second, let me get you a better copy, this one's just, are they both the same, Meg? The, these are the same, the, the declaration of emergency is just handwritten on both.
This one's your copy. This is the other one, wait. Wait, which one's you bring out? You brought out the fire code?
Yes. Fire codes are already grounded.
Oh, oh.
But I was confused, because I was trying to find one of these that.
Yes, it's this one, this is the one that you guys would sign.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next one, an ordinance granting and establishing the salary for the position of clerk of counsel commencing on January 1st, 2022, defining her duties, providing for compensation, work schedule, and repealing ordinance number 21-023 and any ordinance inconsistent herewith and declaring an emergency. And a motion to bring it up.
Motion to bring it up.
Second?
Second.
Do we have one more for the?
Yeah. Yes, we do. Okay, an ordinance authorizing the, ordinance authorizing and directing the city of Strether's to enter into an agreement with Buckeye Energy Brokers, Inc. for aggregation consulting services and any other required services related to the natural gas economy, ratifying any such service therefore performed and declaring an emergency.
Motion to bring it up.
Second?
Second.
And that is it for legislation? Anybody else got anything for this committee?
Yeah, but what happened at the park?
Three kids walking through, 2:30 in the morning, came up onto some, um, Christmas decorations. First kid kicked the snowman.
Saw it on, on TV.
Second kid kicked something else, kicked a dog, and then.
Now, I read that the police picked up three kids for violation of the ordinance, or the.
Was it them?
Curfew. Curfew? Couldn't they compare the two from the film? Is it them?
They can't say yes, and I can't say no.
Allegedly.
Allegedly. Well, I mean, the, the pictures on the TV look pretty good, where they have clothes and stuff, you can probably.
They're underage, so that's why.
What are they doing out at 2:00 in the morning in the morning? Their parents have to have something.
What's a?
2:00 in the morning?
Yeah, 9:00.
Sneak out?
I was, I'm biting my tongue here.
I get it, I know, like, if they snuck out, they snuck out.
The word is, I hate to be a hypocrite, so.
Sunday night, and there was no school.
Yeah.
Oh, right, yeah.
And what, where was this at?
Martin.
Martin.
The last, the last, he really did a doozy number, didn't he?
The stories really looked young. Decorations, they did too.
Just the way he was walking, he looked.
The hoodie on, everything, they looked like they're 12, 13, that's it.
There was, there was some damage done to residents too, and they were still putting on all the other. But they didn't know until they went and posted this on Facebook.
Yeah.
It was on Facebook, it blew up, and then she even saw it, and he's the one that pulled the kids over for curfew.
Curfew.
Everything started. Nothing's done yet, but.
It's in the works.
Oh, good.
It's being investigated.
Yes, we're looking into it.
How's our salt and stuff?
Still good. But there, there was a lot of damage done to them, they're, they're, they're expensive, you know?
They are. Pretty like lighted presents and stuff, they look like.
Yeah, they were, they're like, the dogs, like, $80 for just the dog. So Bob was putting the numbers together for that today, and then he came down and met with the police.
Yeah, it's like, remember when they, they slashed the big sandal pines down at the recycle thing? They had 20-foot sandal pines there, they slashed it up with a knife or whatever.
You know, if they do catch them and whatnot, there's a citizen that says, you know, obviously, maybe they could do some community service up there in the summertime to pay for the stuff, if all possible.
Pay for it and throw it to you.
That's right, absolutely.
Two, the, two of the kids were from Poland, right?
Good.
Well, I think it probably would go through the juvenile court, so I don't know.
Regardless, and you pay for it.
I don't know which direction that judge would send you.
Sure. Anybody else, anything? Anything good? Got something good, Jimmy?
Nothing pertaining to the, uh, financing and legislation, but.
Fair enough. All right, I'm gonna call for adjournment. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned. All right.